Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so we're gonna want to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstain? None? Okay. Um, public remarks, do we have any Dave?
Kathy has got the host side. As we discussed, the intent of public remarks tonight is if someone had a comment specifically related to the two matters that are on the agenda. Otherwise, there would be no other public remarks. Kathy, do we have any?
No, no one's raising their hand at this time.
Okay.
Okay, um, since no one raised their hand, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. Okay, now we'll move on to consideration adoption of the amendment to the budget policy statement.
Chairman.
Yes, Dean?
My, my, I would like to make it, make a brief statement and propose an amendment. As you all know, our charter under 2.4, annually requires the town council to adopt a budget policy statement by guidance for the creation of our budget and, and implementation of it by the various parties in town, the town manager, the board of finance, the council, and ultimately, the taxpayers at referendum. And we adopted that budget policy statement back in November, or November 26th meeting, long before the emergence of this current crisis. Although our guidelines anticipated emergency situations and changes in conditions, the COVID-19 disease presents some unique situations and challenges, including, as we all know, mandated school closings, lack of assembly in public meetings, employer shutdowns and the like. We as the town council are not insensitive either to the needs and the conditions and fiscal crisis that are going to be placed on our citizens and our taxpayers, and we, at the same time, we understand our need to look forward to maintaining our current services as necessary, and also to point in time when this thing is all gone by and past us, and we look to a bright new future. I, I would also point out that number two, or point two of the guidelines, budgets presented should reflect the guidelines presented herein, as well as available revenue projections, anticipated funding shortfalls, but potential impact on current economic conditions. Our town has certainly been blessed with strong financial practices and solid financial position, and together with prudent thinking and budgeting should enable us to weather the storm. Therefore, to, to provide a necessary balance in our community needs and our citizens and taxpayers' ability to pay, I am proposing a, an amendment to our budget guidance and budget policy statement. Correct our town manager and department heads to thoughtfully review their budget requests, strongly encourage our board of education to reflect on their budget requests, whether presented or yet to be presented, and consider adjustments that will keep an absolute minimum fiscal 2020-21 budget requests and recommendations submitted to the board of finance. This can be accomplished within the framework of the extension of municipal budget process and Governor Lamont's executive proclamation number seven. I would offer that as a motion and the guidelines for our budget policy.
Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, now we'll do discussion. Do we have any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mark. I think we need to stiffen up a little bit and come right out and just say, it needs to express that there yet needs to be no new hires at this present time. It's, when we get into the nuts and bolts of the budget, there's a lot of questions I have. The projected state revenue, where's that gonna fall? If we allow the budgets that I've kind of seen floating around, go through and allow new hires, I believe we're gonna be in trouble and we might end up having to lay people off. And I also like to go further in saying, I believe there ought to be wage freezes throughout. At a time when you're closing businesses, this is affecting so many people in this town. It's affecting the landlords. Look at all our commercial landlords who've got vacant buildings. The projecting, projection started out as this would be a two-week thing back in March. It's already been pushed down to April, and there's talk, as you listen, of it actually being to the end of May. How many businesses do you think are gonna survive with being shut down for two months? And then to go ahead and, and throw it in the face that when employees raises, well, they've lost their businesses, that is not fair to the taxpayers of this town. Everyone's taking a hit. Everyone in the private sector is taking this major hit. I don't think it's incumbent, or a problem, asking our employees to help us out, and that's what needs to be done at this time. We need help. Everyone's asking for help. The ramifications of what's going on in the long run, everyone says, yeah, it's great, we're getting $2 trillion from the government, but guess what? We're going to have to pay that back. That's gonna come in on the backs of payroll taxes. So you're gonna be hit further down the road, two years, a year from now, two years from now, with a higher payroll tax. The state of Connecticut was in trouble to begin with. They've lost the casino revenue, they've lost the sale tax revenue from the lack of selling cars, the lack of selling goods. They've also lost, from the transportation fund, the grocery receipts tax because gas is a buck eighty-nine a gallon now. So the state's gonna be looking for money, and where's it gonna come from? Payroll taxes and lack of funding to the small towns. It won't hit the cities, you know it's gonna hit East Hampton. And that's why I'm very concerned about any budget increase we have at all this time, because I have a feeling after you set it, and the state comes in and says, well, we're not gonna give you everything you got last year, where are we getting the extra money from? I, I know this is just a budget policy statement, but I think we need to make the language a little stronger, saying, we need help with this this year.
Is there any other comments?
Well, I, I disagree. I, I think the language is appropriate. It, it gives the appropriate delegation to both the town manager and the request to the board of education to think critically regarding the budgets that are currently, have been worked on and currently presented. I disagree from an economic matter, we don't know whether, what the effect of this will be long-term. From an economic perspective, the analogy would be is the economic effect of a natural disaster, and quite candidly, economies can in fact respond quite robustly after the end of, of a natural disaster. So we don't really know the long-term effects. If you look at increased sales, at for example, looking at different communities affected by Hurricane Harvey or other natural disasters, that would be the appropriate, it seems to me, appropriate sort of economic analogy. Quite clearly going through a crisis that quite clearly has short-term ramifications, quite clearly there is going to be a burden as a result of that, but I guess my question is, the fact that there is a burden doesn't speak to who bears the burden. And I believe that, for example, with respect to the board of education, they put forth a budget that required, that, that provides for additional teachers. I believe that that is an appropriate request, because the question is, who bears the cost? Who bears the burden with respect to these matters? We can talk about costs that are clear, and then costs, you will, that are opaque, and the most significant cost in terms of wealth accumulation is educational attainment. If you look at those individuals that only have a high school degree, they have, they have, have had no net wealth increase in the, in the last thirty years.
Really?
Those individuals that, those individuals-
I'll disagree with that.
No, it's, it's true. No, it's true.
I'm, I'm gonna disagree with that strongly.
It is-
Because I'll tell you what, this world needs is carpenters, plumbers, mechanics.
Absolutely, they do.
He's got a hundred grand a year, and your college-
Absolutely, they do.
-is getting a job at McDonald's, so I'm gonna disagree with you on that, Dean.
Absolutely, absolutely, Tim.
So you're wrong on that, I'm sorry.
Derek.
There is absolutely no-
Can I speak?
Derek.
There is absolutely no evidence, okay, other than the fact that what drives wealth inequality is educational attainment. That, now, and that's not to say, Tim, that we need our schools also.
So you're telling me that you can't make a hundred grand if you don't go to college?
I, I am telling you, I am telling you, I am telling you that the evidence is unambiguous, Tim. It is absolutely unambiguous when you look at the data across the country.
You have to move, want to view?
Well, I'd like to have the floor, I think he's had enough time.
Uh, are you all set, Derek?
Well, let me just sum, let me just summarize. I believe that, to go back to the, to go back to the original, the original presentation by Dean, I believe it, it reflects the fact that we recognize that we are in unique circumstances, and then ask those people who are responsible for the budget itself to think through the implications of that budget in, in this environment. I do not believe it's appropriate to put any hard, fast, specific requirements in an amendment to the budget policy statement.
Okay, thank you, Derek. Tim?
All right, first of all, I'm gonna agree with Mark on this about 100%. First of all, this is not the time to raise taxes. There's not time for new hirees, and it's definitely not time for wage increases. People are losing their jobs left and right. There's gonna be more businesses closed than you can absolutely imagine, in this little town also. There's little bars that are doing everything they can do to hang in there, they gotta pay next, and now we're gonna raise taxes for these people? That's absolutely absurd. And you know what? Guess what? Everybody's gonna take it on the chin, and education does too. You know, I talked to somebody, and I can't, it escapes me from what town, so I apologize. They don't have Chromebooks until they're in junior high. We've got Chromebooks, what does it start, in third grade or something? So we're way ahead of the curve. So everybody that complains about we don't have enough Chromebooks and this and that, maybe we ought to do some more investigation out there in the towns, surrounding towns about this. And I think that's absolutely absurd to do something to that, to these things. They, they voted us in to do the best we can and look out for them. Looking out for them is not raising taxes on new hirees. And I'm still upset about what you're talking about college, but we'll get into that another day.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Any other comment?
Well, I would just like to say that I think most of that discussion, it's good discussion, but it is for another day. I think we're just trying to change the bu, budget policy statement and, but.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I don't have a problem with the amendment to the budget policy statement, because as I read that, and what I heard from some of our council members, it doesn't necessarily mean that isn't going to occur. We, we have a board of education, and we have a town manager and his department heads that are going to fully understand what this states, that this is a critical period of time in this country, in this state, and in our community. And I have faith that our town manager and his staff, the board of education, the superintendent, the administration and their staff are gonna fully understand the critical nature of this year and this budget. I think they should be given the opportunity to be able to show us what they believe is important, and it could be very well different than what would have been presented a little over a week ago, if in fact, we were on the regular schedule. I also know that we have a board of finance that's gonna be reviewing this as well, and then, oh, by the way, we're gonna be reviewing this as well, okay? It's not a one-shot makes it. So I think the statement is appropriate. I think if you read through the statement very carefully, everything that's been stated is right there. There might not be raises, and they might propose that, and that's all well and good. And I wouldn't have a problem with that, but the long and short of it is, we had these people get elected, or we hired them to do a job, allow them to do their job, allow the elected officials to do their job, because, oh, by the way, we get the last say.
Mr. Chairman.
Dean?
I just make a, a couple quick points. One, with regard to new hires, I believe our existing budget policy statement does talk about new hires, and looking at that very carefully before anything would even be proposed, I would give our town manager a lot of credit that he is to be evaluating that very closely as he puts his budget together. I don't think anyone is oblivious to the situation our country's in, and everyone is going to be very respectful and, and com, complative of what's going on. As for wage freezes, I think that is something that would be considered on a case-by-case basis in the event we had any contracts coming before us. Well, no, I think most of our contracts are already or have been in place, and they were actually voted on us, and I think legally, we have no right or ability to change the terms of those unilaterally. Though our town attorney, I think by his face, present, Mr. Corella could certainly comment on that, but that would be my belief, so put that as a statement, might be a little, put us in, in a very poor position legally. I, I think overall, our budget policy statement gives good direction, and what this particular statement is saying, our town manager and our department heads have not submitted their budget request yet, and it gives them an opportunity to take a, a good cold look at the, the thing, and it requests, or endorses, or asks board of education to do the same. We have no authority over the board of education and what they do, other than in the final decision on the budget. But it is certainly would behoove them, in light of everything that's going on, to, take another look and possibly reconsider some things, and that's what we're asking. Will it all come out to a, a no increase budget? I very much doubt it, and I just think we've already committed ourselves to attract to the future, and it, as tough as it may be, we're gonna, we're gonna have to move ahead with some of that. I hope there's no new taxes or additional taxes, but I don't think that's realistic. Would force this particular motion.
Dean, you're, you're dropping off.
I'm off now.
Oh, okay. Is there any other? I would just like to add, I think that most boards, all boards, have the welfare of the town in their minds. I think that with this crisis, and I am talking about the financial crisis, that is probably gonna hit everywhere down the road. Some of it has hit now, but with people getting laid off, people losing their jobs, this is gonna create, I think, a shortfall in the town's ability to collect revenues, if there's someone out there to collect them from, mainly, I'm talking about the business. I think this amendment covers everything we've talked about today. I don't think at this point in time, we can do much more than that. We have to trust that the board, individual boards, the town manager, the board of ed, are not living in a vacuum, they see what's happening, they know what's happening, and will do their utmost best for the town. Dave, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, no, I mean, I certainly recognize what everyone's saying, and, and as many of you know, right about the time that this situation broke was the time that, that the town manager's budget would have been coming out. One of the first steps I took when this situation came into, to, to being, in a, in sort of a forceful way, I guess I'll call it, is I pulled that back, and I made the decision that, we don't know what's going on, this isn't ready, we have to reevaluate, and we sort of put that on the shelf and moved through, you know, the endemic as we have at this point. So I certainly recognize what the council's saying, I certainly recognize the responsibility I have, and, and I think that the staff recognizes that as well, as we look at how we should change what we were proposing just a few weeks ago.
Okay, and, um, do we have any none from the board of ed?
There are some in the meeting, yes. Two hands up.
Would they like to comment?
I don't think that's appropriate, Mr. Chairman, this is basically our, our item, which really doesn't leave any room for comment from the audience on. It's a council's budget policy statement.
I agree. I will withdraw that part. Okay, is there any other discussion on the amendment? Here and none? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Kathy, how many did you get for opposed?
I have five in favor and two opposed, Mark and Tim.
Okay, the motion passed. The next item on the agenda is the resolution pertaining to the modified calendar for the FY 2002-2021 general and capital fund budget authorization by executive order 2027B 7C and 71.
Aye. Yes, thank you, if I may, just, just briefly, as a, as a, as a setup, you can certainly read the, the details of the whereas clauses there, which outline the, the whole scenario, but basically, the governor exec, issued a number of executive orders that are described in the resolution, that in totality do a couple of things. One, they extend the budget action calendar for municipalities by essentially thirty days, taking anything that was supposed to happen by May 15 and moving that out thirty days. Further, the governor's actions basically require that the town council adopt a process that leads to the town council adopting a budget and a mill rate for the community without in-person activity by the community, that is, without a town meeting or without a referendum. So there have been a number of discussions related to the resolution. The resolution you have in front of you was drafted by a group of attorneys, a number of attorneys that work for municipalities. Rich Corella, our attorney, is here and, and can certainly talk to that, but the resolution you have was, was drafted by the municipal attorneys group as a model. It was modified by the town of East Hampton to not only discuss our specific processes and, and our specific charter sections, for example. We, we, instead of using a table, for example, for the, the calendar portion or the, the meat of the, of the resolution, we did it in a paragraph form, and of course, it calls for us to follow our processes, there would be two separate resolutions at the end. The, the resolution was drafted, as I suggested to you the last time we talked about this in a public forum, following as closely as possible the, to East Hampton's normal process. That is, that a budget would come from the board of education, a budget would come from the town manager, it would be reviewed and, and modified as necessary by the board of finance, who is, who would take public comment and would hold a variety of workshop meetings. Once that was complete, the board of finance would make a recommendation to the town council, and this is where it starts to diverge. Town council in this scenario, rather than simply taking a vote, defying it, and then sending it to the town meeting, would be able to take that budget, reduce it as it sees fit, and adopt it at that point. And that's the mandate of the governor, is basically to truncate off that last part of the process. There have been a number of questions that have come up in, in the time that this has been out for review from, from council members or others, and I just thought I'd take a moment and, and try to address some of those. As I said, Rich Corella is here and, and can chime in really at any time to clarify what I've said, or correct what I've said, but in no particular order, let me just, let me just hit on a couple of items. One was a question related to, to tie votes, if there should happen to be a, a situation where, at any part of the process, there was a tie vote. I'll just remind you of Robert's Rules of Order in that case, and, and a tie vote would essentially equates to a fail, and there would have to be work done to either resolve the matters that are creating the, the tie, or I suppose you wait until the time that that last member can come back in and, and create odd number of members again. Of course, both boards are odd numbers normally, but, so that, a tie vote is a failure, and it would just have to be worked out. There's a question whether, at any point, the council could push any of this back to the board of finance. My answer to that would be, certainly you could, if the council felt that the budget needed to be worked further, it could send it back to the board of finance, notwithstanding the fact that the resolution does basically require the council to act by June 9. So provided there were time to send it back to the board of finance, you could, but the council, of course, has that deadline, and of course, in this instance, has the final authority, as has been discussed. Similar question related to the mill rate, could that be pushed back to the board of finance? Interestingly, no, while normally the board of finance gets the authority, or has the authority, to undertake what I refer to as sort of an administrative task of setting the final mill rate, in this instance, the governor has put that in the, squarely in the hands of the council. It still is a relatively administrative task, but the council gets to make the final decision on what the mill rate is in this particular year. There was a question related to whether a mail ballot could be used, and Rich, you may want to chime in here as well, on this particular one, but in the discussion that we had related to a mail ballot, it's, it's, and it is the opinion that the executive orders do not provide for a mail ballot. The executive order is pretty clear that the town- The executive order is pretty clear that the town, that the, the town council, in our case, shall adopt a budget. And so they shall, they, you have that responsibility and that requirement under the orders. Similarly, there is a question as to whether there could be a delay. Same answer there, there is a statement that basically says the town council shall adopt a, a budget. There is also a conversation or a question related to whether, rather, what would happen if during this process, the executive order should be lifted? And as you know, there is a paragraph at the end that talks about that if the order is lifted by May 21, the council would act to reinstate the usual process. That, of course, was, was inserted into the resolution based on a, on a comment that was made at the last meeting, but I would also suggest that as we've continued to think about that, it may, that that paragraph more or less becomes moot. If in fact, the governor were to lift the emergency order, or the town council took an action, it could be argued that no longer does the process that was established in this resolution exist because there's no foundational law for it. And provided, again, that the council has not acted on a final budget, we could at that point, or perhaps would have to at that point, reinstate the original process, that is reinstate wherever we're at in the process. Can you forward from that with a town meeting and a town referendum at the end? Of course, it all becomes moot if the town council actually acts on a budget and adopts something, and the next day, the governor lifts the executive order. It is an adopted budget, it is final, it is law, if you will, and the fact that the process is no longer necessary is, is irrelevant, the adoption, the adoption has taken place. So the council could act as, as it wishes, as relates to that final paragraph, but I guess our opinion would be, and again, Rich, chime in, our opinion would be that if in fact, the resolution became moot by action of the governor lifting the executive orders before the council acted, we would be obligated to finish the process from wherever we are until the end, as it is explained in our current charter.
Yep. Let me just comment, first of all, Dave, you know, correctly reflects all the discussions that Dave, Jeff and I have been having about this process and trying to navigate our way through the executive order. He, and, and the, the last part that he's raising, we discussed at length earlier today. It is, you know, I think what we've done here with the resolution is try to keep as much as possible the normal budget adoption process, invest with the town as much as possible your, your charter obligations, and to the extent that the executive order suspends the, the town meeting or any type of referendum, including a ballot vote, because that is a type of referendum, that's, that's where it diverges from your, your annual budget process. And if, and if in fact, this were to be lifted prior to your town council actually adopting the budget, we would go back to the, the, the law of the town of East Hampton, which is the town charter, and adopt the budget in its normal fashion. So I agree with everything that Dave just recited, and, and happy to answer any of your questions as well.
Thank you, Richard.
Dave, are you all set?
I believe I am, sir, that's my introduction.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion?
Just a question.
I don't think we have a motion before us.
Oh, okay.
I move that we, I, I move that we adopt the resolution pertaining to the modified calendar for fiscal year 2020 to 2021, the general and capital fund budgets authorized by executive order 2020 hyphen 7B7C, and I think that's a seven I.
Correct.
Seven I.
I would second that.
Okay, do we have any discussion?
Yeah, a couple of questions. In the governor's executive orders, is there a date that the budget has to be done by? So you could push this to a vote on a July meeting, correct?
The governor extended, in one of his earlier orders, extended the municipal timeframe by 30 days, and my understanding is that we're supposed to be, under our current charter, sending to referendum the budget by, by May, by the second week of May, essentially. So the governor's extension gives us till the second week of June.
That's, that's correct.
So we have to vote on it by the second week of June?
Correct.
Okay.
That would be our interpretation, and I, Rich, you can talk about it if you need.
No, that's, that's exactly right.
Is there, or by then, is anybody anticipating having any numbers out of the state as to what we'll be receiving for reimbursements?
Mark, my understanding is the state is going to, the legislature will have its budget done all before our municipal calendar is finished.
So we'll have an idea before we have to set a mill rate then?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Richard, this is Derek Johnson. In, in, so as I, as I understand it then, so that, from what you and David have stated that, that should we go through past May 21, and so we've concluded, if you will, the, the budget process, and then it's at that point going to the town council. But if at that point, the governor would lift the executive order or revoke it, at that point, we go back to square one, so to speak, in terms of, in terms of the charter?
I don't know if you'd go back to square one, I think you would kind of pick up where you're at in terms of the budget process, you know, you will, you would have had your budget workshops with department heads.
Yes.
Public, perhaps a public meeting with the Board of Finance, so I think you could, you could take that budget, and if the only final step at that point in time would be to go to a town meeting or conduct a referendum, you could do that if this executive order were lifted.
Okay. Is there any requirement, and I'm looking at paragraph number six of the resolution, it, it gives some flexibility in terms of the, the dates for the approval? I guess, I think there's two, two dates.
Those are your regularly scheduled meetings.
The, is there, is there a requirement that they, I don't see it in the resolution, but is there a requirement that they be handled combined or separately, or that's within the discretion of the council?
Are you talking about the budgets, like the government budget and the Board of Education budget?
Yes.
You could handle them, I, I think you could handle them both on the same meeting date, if that's what you're asking.
Yes, okay.
Or conversely, could they be handled on separate?
Yeah, on the other side, could be handled on separate, on separate dates.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Right, is there any other discussion on the motion? Here and none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Here and none, the motion is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are up for adjournment.
Can I have one quick thing? What do we have, everybody here? Mr. Chair, could we actually get Matt Walsh to attend our next meeting, if possible?
Matt Walsh?
Well, our, our, our public works director, am I saying his name incorrectly?
Oh, you're right.
You're right.
Okay, I, I'd like to have him attendance because I'm very concerned about some different things, as in street sweeping, considering we're spending a lot of money around this lake, and we, I think that needs to be done soon. Road grading, how much equipment's been broken and how long it's been down and why?
Well, I'll tell you what, we'll put it as part of our agenda for our next meeting.
I would really appreciate that, thank you very much.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you very much, everybody, stay safe and healthy.
Thank you.
David, I know the meeting's over, you got a second?
Sure, I can call you.
Yeah, I, no, it means, quick question. All over the news, how safe are these meetings we're having on this Zoom as far as our attention?